Officially call the meeting for order. And do a quick call of the council, Council London, Council Spidey, Council Bearden, Council Wilson, all present. And you have the minutes before you, they were sent out ahead of time. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for pre-council meeting and regular council meeting for August 1st, 2017?
I make the motion that the reading of the minutes be distributed since all members of the council have received a copy and it should be approved and submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, Council Spidey, would you go over approval of current bills for payment?
Sure, I make a motion for the approval of the current bills for payment in the amount of $102,143.62.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Do we have any professional or consultant reports tonight? Thank you. The mayor sends his regrets, he's with his brother at university hospital, his brother's having a transplant, so he wasn't able to attend and he had nothing to report tonight. I don't see any department heads present, so don't believe we have any there. We'll start with Council London, if you have anything tonight.
Just a couple things. First of all, good evening everyone. We're excited to be here. There's a couple of things, just want to thank the Exchange Club, Exchange Club for excellent job that they've done in dedicating the green space at Rock Ridge. It's a beautiful place that they have there. The young lady from Chase Valley High School designed it, they lived there, they designed it and sit around it, their beautiful job putting that together. So we're excited about that and thank Council Spidey and other here, we're there, putting hot dogs, bringing hot dogs, we're excited and the police were there also, so we did a coffee shop. So we're excited that they, that happened. Also, a special shout out to Dwayne Talbot, he's the guy at the club, they call the J Club, from Jacksonville State University. They come the last past three years and do a bookbag drive for Beacon Park and we're excited that they, they continue to choose Irondale, they come and do that and we're so excited about that. With Dwayne Talbot, State Farm Agent, Mr. Talbot and the J Club of Jacksonville State University for doing such a fantastic job with that. Thank y'all. I'm glad to be here and I hope you're glad to be here also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Spidey?
I'll hold on to my finance report until we get to that section. But as far as my report, just wanted to mention that there will be a cop stop at Ventura Place Park on August the 24th, starting at 5:30. It'll be something similar to what was done up at Rock Ridge, hot dogs, hamburgers, meet the police, just a good opportunity for neighbors to get out and meet each other, meet the police and everything like that. So that is the, that is the green space that is over in Roque Plaza. So that is going to be August the 24th at 5:30. As far as, I'm just gonna leave it at that now. Thank you.
Council Bearden?
Thank you. I went to the Miss Senior Alabama contest this past Saturday in Hansville and our Miss Senior Irondale, Jamis Jackson, was in the pageant this year and I think she did an excellent job, she did a place, but she did a wonderful job for representing the city of Irondale. And our Miss Senior Alabama, last year, went to the Miss Senior America contest this year and placed second in the country. And I think that's, that's, that shows how good for Alabama. And then, they also have, now have a Miss USA for Miss Senior Universe. I think this is a new position and our Miss Senior Alabama for 2016 decided not to go, so our Miss Senior Alabama 2013 went and won the Miss USA pageant for the Miss Senior Universe, so she'll be going to the Miss Senior Universe pageant. So congratulate the state of Alabama for those two wins.
Thank you. All right, Council Bearden?
Thank you. Good evening everyone. Just wanted to mention a couple of things that I would like to bring to the council during our next work session. Plus, I think I mentioned this on Monday during our pre-meeting, is that the city attorney and I, we're gonna be working on our ordinance. We're gonna be updating our ordinance, city ordinance, to make sure it matches the state law. I think we have some ordinances on the books right now that doesn't match what the state law is, so we'll be going back through our ordinances and taking each section and try to make sure, you know, it matches state code. Another thing that we're gonna be working on, we always talk about keeping our deal clean, we're gonna try to look at all of the signs that are attached in the city. What I mean by that, the "I sell houses" or "I buy houses," they're attached to our stop signs and our corner signs that, you know, says what street, our street signs, yeah. So we're gonna look at that because sometimes, I don't know about everyone else, but when I see those signs attached to stop signs and street signs, it's just, it's real tacky to me, so we need to look at that. Plus, I've been getting phone calls, we have a lot of cars parked in some of the neighborhoods and in some yards where we know that we have some people selling cars from their front yard. I think that is something that we need to look at also. Instead of selling cars from your front yard, I think you need to go ahead and put them in a lot and put up a sign and, you know, sell them the right way, I guess, you know. But just wanted to throw that out there, just to let everyone know, put it on record what we're working on as far as our ordinance is concerned. Plus, another thing I want to bring up real quick, we talked about the mosquito spray, the council did, I would like to bring that back up. I got a very angry citizen that called me before I got here. And so I want to bring that back up and it was some good ideas that was thrown out. Instead of just going out and spraying, I really want to kind of reintroduce that just to see if we can come to some kind of median, even though it's, the summer's about to leave us, but we really need to talk about that and try to come up with a resolution as far as what we, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. For my report, let's go ahead, we talked about doing the work session on the 18th to discuss the painting of the roads. Do we want to try to do two of the ordinances that night? Council Wilson, would you like to talk about the parking of the cars as we already have that one basically added and got downed, so could we address that and maybe look at the signed ordinance the same night?
That's correct, yeah.
And we can do a mosquito discussion that night too, if we've got time. So could we do those four items that night?
Yeah.
And all I want to talk about tonight in my report, I know y'all are aware, there have been a series of break-ins throughout Irondale. Fortunately, on this past Monday, thanks to good work by our police department, there is one group that had been put under arrest at this point, but the chief said to remind everybody, they do not believe they were working alone, so there may be still other people out there doing the same thing, although they still want the arrest of these individuals. And they were actually arrested right across the line in Birmingham at the, what is it called, USA, the Grip By The Weak Hotel. But basically, there are still members of that group out in areas, but they probably will not be in Irondale like they were before because they know they've got cohorts that are in jail and those cohorts probably would love to turn them in if they can get to us. But again, still be vigilant, but seeing that your police force was out there working hard and brought this to a quick resolution under the circumstances, because these people were very interesting, they came in my neighborhood twice and actually had been in a third time the day they were caught, but hadn't done anything that day. But again, good work by the police department because they continue to keep us safe and just, when you've got 30 people for all the chefs covering the city this size, they're out there, but they have to be stretched a little bit while they're doing their work. Any reports from boards or non-council committees tonight? Shoemaker?
Hey, I have a couple of dates that I would like for y'all to put down and if I can also turn around and...
Is there a microphone there? Yeah, James doesn't have, he's out here recording, so he needs everything on tape tonight.
James? It's Tella's, okay. Hi, I'm Tella's Shoemaker, I'm the director of the Irondale Chamber of Commerce and I do have a couple of dates that I would like for you to remember. On September 11th, we're having our third annual 9/11 remembrance and Thanksgiving ceremony that's going to be outside of City Hall from 9:00 a.m. until 9:30 a.m. And I really hope that all of you can attend and be a part of that ceremony. We are remembering those and honoring those from 9/11 as well as paying honor and tribute to our first responders here in Irondale. The police chief asked me to announce, and this is another one, National Night Out will be Tuesday, October 3rd, from 6:00 until 8:00 o'clock across at the Irondale Deco, right there by Irondale Cafe. And that is a evening, it's really one of the most fun events here in Irondale. It's about police department and activities for kids and fire department, a lot of city personnel coming together, a DJ, free food. So anyway, we hope, and hope that you will all be a part of that as well. And then today, several people met representing the city and the city of Irondale is sponsoring a Very Hairy Halloween trunk or treat and that is going to be for 5 until 7 o'clock on October 31st. That will be our first Halloween event. The library has had the Very Hairy Halloween and other parts, other departments of the city are going to take part in this as well. Trunk or treat, we'll have this part of the street from the library to the end of the street, we'll have that blocked off, we'll have candy for children, there'll be events inside the library and we'll all be dressing, the mayor's gonna ask that all city departments pick a different theme and have a trunk and we would hope that y'all would do that with your districts as well. While we're just all looking at you, look at you, you're like, what do I want to be? So it ought to be a lot of fun and it'll be enough time also for the children to get to their neighborhood and trunk or treat and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you so very much. I'll go ahead and read our notice of public hearing.
Steve.
Oh, Steve. John?
Mind if I mention our Exchange Club meetings? We've got an opportunity to meet our new principal.
Go ahead, please.
My name is John Shawan, I'm with the Exchange Club. If you'd like an opportunity to meet our new principal from Irondale Community School, we're gonna have a meeting with her at 5:30 at the Exchange over next to the Restor, store in our meeting room over there at 5:30. We do have a lunch served, but you don't have to eat it, you can come and just observe if you like, but if you want to eat, give me a call or someone else at Exchange Club and we can set you up. It's $12 per person or free for your first time, so there may be a lot of first timers there, but we do need to know if you're gonna come. Also, the Exchange Club is having a wine and cheese party on the 31st at 5:30 at, also at the, next to the Restor meeting room. So everyone is welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Was there anybody else? David, do you want to go ahead and go on the finance?
I did, I did.
Thank you, sir.
So going over the finance report real quick, James gave out some information on Monday night to us, so I just wanted to kind of hit the high points really quickly. As far as income goes, if we look at where we're at in the fiscal year, we're, we've got about seventeen odd percent of the year left fiscally and we have about 16.45% of our income yet to be received. So those are, those numbers gel pretty well. However, as James has said before, we're getting into a part of the year where a lot of revenue isn't necessarily received. A lot of the taxes have already come in, so that could be a little bit of concern for us. The numbers have been consistently trending up to this point, so we would hope that we would still be continuing to get our income as we approach the end of the fiscal year. Okay, like I said, as we move through this year, the percentages have matched up very, very well. So from that standpoint, from an income standpoint, we're doing pretty good. From an outflow standpoint, we're looking at finishing this year with, right now, we've got an unfavorable variance on our outflow of about $1.1 million. So we're trending at a deficit right now. Now that being said, this budget was crafted before there were two major pieces of litigation that we had to deal with. These pieces of litigation go back to the early 2000s, they just kind of reared their head during this fiscal year and we had to deal with them. Ones were about $700,000, ones were about $500,000. So when this budget was crafted, those were not factored in. So yes, we are running out of deficit and that is the reason why. Had it not been for those two items, the, there would not be a deficit most likely. The budget would be on pace and expenses would be on pace and we would just be doing hunky-dory. So as we make financial decisions, we have to figure out what we're going to do about that $1.1 million deficit and it sounds like we're trying to put things in place and maybe we'll get some good news tonight that might help us with things. So, thank you very much.
And would you please be kind enough just to mention for the council members where we are on the budget preparation?
Oh, thank you.
Seventeen, eighteen?
Thank you. So the mayor's office is crafting the budget for next fiscal year. Council is expected to have it first week of September for us to start going through that, which doesn't give us a whole lot of time considering it's supposed to take effect in October. So we're anticipating getting these, getting this budget to us in September. Maybe we can put the pressure on them a little bit to get it a bit sooner than that so we can have a little bit more time to go through it.
Thank you so very much. Now I'll do my reading session. Notice is hereby given that the city of Irondale, Alabama is called regular meeting Thursday, August 17th, 2017, at 6:30 p.m. at the Irondale City Hall located at 101 South 20th Street, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, at which the city council of the city will hear from the owner of the property located at 2305 First Avenue South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, and interest with citizens concerning demolition of the unsafe structure located on that property. Do I have a motion that we leave regular council and go to public hearing?
I make the motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing for shift.
Second.
Second, Council Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
And at this point, do we have the owner present to make any comments?
I do not believe he's here.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience that have any comments for the evac? Do we have anyone in the audience that have any comments against the evacuation? This is one of the first houses to come through for evacuation in a good while. There are others out there on the list that are in various stages of having notices served, so again, this is just one meeting to come. Each house, unless something changes, us having to actually move forward, runs the city from $6,000 to $8,000 depending on the size of the house, but we are moving forward to get lighted properties evacuated. Now, if there are no additional comments, I may have a motion to close.
I have one, one suggestion. So the owner of the, of this property is a new owner, just recently acquired the property. He has every intention of demolishing the property himself. I have asked that this stay on the agenda just in case he doesn't actually demolish the structure, we still have the ability to do that. So hopefully he will demolish the structure and possibly save the city $5,000, $7,000. He's got some plans for that particular piece of land that are exciting, I'm sure we'll be talking about those sometime in the future, but he, hopefully we won't have to tear it down, but this was just a sidebar.
But what we will probably do is proceed with the resolution, but he would have 30 days to submit his plan and make good on what he plans to do with the property. Okay, at this point, accept the motion to close our public hearing.
You make the motion that we leave budgetary and return regular council meeting?
Second.
Now, who wants to be kind enough to try and get the approval of the agenda with all our additions? We have it ready.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as stated. I don't think, well, we haven't...
It's been passed out in the audience, it's not your original when published, but it has all the new additions.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And at this point, we will take comments from the attendees on any item related to the agenda only.
David, excuse me, Steve, did the people in the hallway kind of get this?
Yes.
Okay, they got the update?
They are, yes. There are more on the wall, let's see. If you do come forward to speak at this point or come forward to speak during the opening party at the end of the meeting, please fill out all the forms that are on the wall bracket and I guess I'll be handing it to me tonight since Mr. Stewart had to leave the second half of the meeting. So do we have any comments from the audience on any agenda?
It's the same one. Yeah.
Right. We're rolling in with our preparation on unfinished business.
Steve, I think there is a shortage of agendas. Should I go ahead and read the added agendas, I'll be more than happy to.
Here's another one, if anybody wants one. What has been added tonight are basically three items. And what I'll do is, the third one is resolved with Resolution 2017-R85, create a request for proposal to hire a grant writer. The next one is resolved with Resolution 2017-R86, authorizing Red Horse Tavern, Inc. to be an outside provider of beer and wine to the Whistle Stop Festival. And the final is basically a resolution to approve settlement with Norfolk Southern and authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents to affect that settlement. And we'll have that vote actually after the executive session. So if anybody has any comments on any of those items, you're welcome to come forward. If not, we'll proceed to look at unfinished business, resolve the Resolution 27-R81, declare the property at 2305 First Avenue South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, to be in public nuisance.
I make a motion that Resolution 2017-R-A-A you want to be approved?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move on to new business. First item is resolved with Resolution 2017-R83, accepts the petition of vacation of right-of-way from the Jefferson County Board of Education for the city of Irondale to vacate the alley between 225 16th Street, South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, and 1719 Second Avenue South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, and 1723 Second Avenue South, Alamo, 35210. It has already been discussed that does not affect anybody's access to their property or to pick up their garbage. Do I have a motion to, to make the motion that Resolution 2017-R83 been passed? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Resolved with Resolution 2017-R84 declares various properties to be in public nuisance. And I think the list that was published originally had two add-ons and you had one, Council 40.
Forty, fifty-two, Sherborne Road.
And Council 50.
Fifty, uh... Do we need to read the rest of the...
Fifty-seventeen, you'll lay it.
They were published, if anyone of y'all would like for us to read out the actual properties, I don't know if you have the interest, but I think the resolution states these properties individually. Do I have a motion to proceed with that?
Make a motion that Resolution 2017-R84 be approved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? All right. Resolve the Resolution 2017-R85, create a request for proposal to hire a grant writer. And again, this is a request for proposal.
I make a motion that Resolution 2017-R-A-A be approved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Resolve the Resolution 2017-R86, authorizing Red Horse Tavern, Inc. to be an outside provider of beer and wine to the Whistle Stop Festival, 2017. Council Spidey, any comments?
No, this is a, this is a vendor that's been used in the past, so that's my only comment.
And we do have a copy of their license with the state of Alabama, so...
I have one question. Is this gonna cost anything additional? No? Okay.
Do I have a motion then?
Sure, I make a motion that Resolution 2017-R-A-A be approved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. And at this point, I would accept the motion to go into executive session, but Leslie has not made it quite yet.
I'll make a motion that we move on to public comments to the council.
Leslie, let's do it.
Leslie's over the way.
Yeah, she says she should be here any moment.
Probably stuck in freeway traffic.
So is there any general comments from the public, if anyone would like to come forward? And please remember, if you'll hand me your slip of paper when you come up, I'll be the keeper and you have your three minutes to keep the discussion. Thank you so much, y'all. Please.
I'd like to remind the council that we do have ordinances on the books regarding signs, we just need to enforce them, I think. We also have ordinances on the books regarding parking and we just need to enforce those too. So, you know, there's really not a whole lot of issue involved in going through meetings or this stuff, just enforcing the ordinances that we have right now unless you feel like you need to add something to it. Thank you.
And that was the point, we may need to add a little bit of verbiage to it based on the conversation that Ben Leslie had.
Thank you so much, Sean.
Is this the point where you can ask a question?
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Please, Don.
Don Hodges, you're still at the six forty minute home leave room.
Paperwork for me, Don?
Sorry.
You got your paperwork for me? You're a good farmer.
Paperwork?
Yep. You can fill us out for me. Come on, you can talk and you give that to me for a minute.
Hey, that's a question, so...
That's right.
I just, I got the information about upcoming changes, and I just wanted to ask, of course, I see the thing about the prayers and announcement about how to brush pickup, the description has changed and everything, but I don't see a day for a brush pickup. And the reason I'm asking is because I've got brush at my house that's been there for three weeks and on the average, it stays, when I put brush out at the curb, it stays two to three weeks.
I think on brush pickup, they more or less is go around and do it as they can. I don't think there's...
So there's not gonna be a specific day?
I don't believe so, because I will agree, I've had brush sit on my street for about two weeks, but after about two weeks, it's generally gone. I think they, they get to it, they kind of go through the city on a rotation. I might be speaking...
Basically, what they, I think what we were explained initially is that because of the limitation of the trucks availability, they start in one area and just work their way through the city over a period of whatever it takes to pick up and then they start over again. But what we can do is pass your comments on to the mayor because he's the one that directs the public work.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, that's where my concern is, because you know, I mean, I pay my taxes just like you do and I, I think, I don't think once a week to maybe extend to a week and a half would be asking too much.
Appreciate that. We'll have, we'll definitely pass that. Basically, if you, if you have the mayor's email address, the mayor@cityofirendalealabama.gov...
I've never gotten a response for it since January of this year.
Try you luck now.
Try my luck now?
Just, the main thing is to get, to get the information on the table, because he will follow up the public works.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. I'll give my paperwork. Old and senior moment, I'm sorry, I forgot. What are we paying a city attorney now?
About an hour, up to a maximum of $300,000.
It still could be $300,000?
Yes.
Okay. I, I give a little bit to you and then I feel that's utterly ridiculous. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for commenting, just I just, anyone else, any general comments tonight? We are basically in a holding pattern, but as our present attorney pointed out, of course, because this particular thing that we're going to discuss in executive session was not published 24 hours before we need to do it. Again, it's in the best interest of the city to move forward. It would be great just to have a separate motion to move forward with this particular thing in executive session.
I'll make a, I'll make a...
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we...
I make a motion that we adjourn the council until the arrival of our attorney Leslie and then go into executive session.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
That okay?
Did you want to add that first?
Well, when you, when you come back, you can add it to the agenda, but you could do it then.
Add what?
This item was not posted 24 hours in advance. So you're adding this to your agenda. You should take a vote to add it to the agenda.
That was actually.
We already did that. You read the, you read it and we added it.
Uh huh. Are we, are we agreeing with all three items? Thank you, Mark. And that's second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Thank you. If you would like to stay around, we will be back to make a final decision on the resolution until we finish the executive session.
We will be able to give the details some time.
That will be up to further executive session.
Okay. Close. If they need a lawyer here. You want a lawyer? Any questions?
Thank you. Hold on. We're gonna. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our Resolution 2017-R87 to approve a settlement and escrow agreement with Norfolk Southern and authorize, that authorize, and authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documents required to affect the settlement.
Make a motion to be approved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any opposed?
Like a mic, you adjourn.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.